I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could stand for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome. I'm going to go ahead and move on to our agenda for tonight. And if I could get a motion to adopt our agenda.
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted, printed, and placed on file.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Todd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Cole, is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. All right, we've reached our presentations for this evening, and it looks like we have a couple around CTE.
We do. Our CTE Director, Ms. Jackie Lansina, will be making tonight's presentations.
Well, and I haven't had a lot of preparation notice, but forgive me. I love to brag on my students anyway, so it's just fine. We'll start with our automotive students. So can I get Vincent Sciaglio to come up? And can I get Jasper Johnson to come up? And Jasper didn't think he could make it today because he has driver's ed, so I'm glad to see him tonight, so thank you. You guys want to stand over here by me? These two young men are 10th graders at Bedford High School. They're in our automotive program. And they did something that I have in my career never seen, especially from 10th graders. They took their ASE certification tests this year, and they passed all 10.
Wow.
In one year.
Awesome.
They're being recognized by ASE for that, and we just wanted to give them a special congratulations because it is above and beyond what they have done this year. It's amazing. So we're very proud. We're happy to see what they can do in the next couple of years. And if you have anything, anybody that you need to work on a car, I would pick these two. That's what I'm thinking, right? So Vincent, as the Director of CTE at Bedford High School, I want to say congratulations. I'm proud of you. Continue to do the great things. Jasper, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks.
Good job. I also treated them to lunch one day, which was cool. So we've had a couple of good things happening.
John, could you come up and shake the floor here?
You're going to go around in a circle there? You got Owen next, and Cooper? Yeah, Cooper's here. Yeah. Nice job, guys. Our next presentation is going to be for Business Professionals of America. So if I can get Mrs. Lundquist and Cooper Tarleton to come up, please. Owen Shabelski could not be here tonight, but I wanted to let you know how proud I am. For anybody that's ever run a club for students or any type of organization, it is a lot of self-sacrifice. It is a lot of work. And these students have done some amazing things, and I'm proud of both Mrs. Lundquist and Cooper for what they've done. Cooper, this year, at the state level, which was held in Grand Rapids, he competed, and he got first place in advanced accounting. That's first place out of everyone in the state that was competing in that category with BPA. So, good job. And I wanted to also recognize Mrs. Lundquist for her years of dedication and service to Bedford Public Schools, but especially to CTE and to BPA. Because I, as a DECA, former DECA advisor, I know that it is a labor of love. So thank you. Good job. I can't wait to see there. Headed to Orlando in just, how many weeks?
Three.
Three weeks. Do you want to say anything?
Sure, I can. It's just been a joy this year. The senior class is very special to me. So Cooper has been with me all four years of high school. And so just, and I was judging advanced accounting. I don't know if I even shared that with you. And Owen Shabelski could not be here. He placed first in payroll accounting at the state level and fifth in advanced. So they knew I was judging, and all weekends they wanted to know who won. And I knew that one of them came in first, and one came in fifth, and I just cried, like I almost did, with the recognition. Jackie knows me well. But anyway, it's just such an honor and a privilege to, you know, encourage these young adults and watch them grow, and they're leaving and going into finance, I think, as a career. And they just really represent Bedford and CTE so well. So thank you so much for recognizing them.
You want me to take this one?
Yeah, take that. Okay. You want to go shake everyone's hands, too?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks for the presentation. I always say, if you guys don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's okay. You can head out now. It's being recorded, so you can watch it in the luxury of your own home. Good to see you guys. All right, we're going to move on to our first public commentary for agenda items only. I see no one rushing the podium. We'll go ahead and move on to our board correspondents. Griffin?
We received an email from Jackie for the various CTE events that we've had in the past month. And we also received an email from a parent about the latchkey program. That's it.
All right, thanks, Griffin. Moving on to our board committee reports. Bedford Township Government, Amy is excused. Dr. Schultz, anything you want to add?
Only that we are, they are working to solidify the date for the fireworks coming this year. They've asked to, once again, use the stadium in the same manner they did last year. I'm not sure. I'll have to talk to Tom and hopefully the paving project over there for, if there are people that normally park at Indian Creek, it might be an issue. We are having some paving work hopefully done around that time. So the stadium should be fine at the high school, but parking could be at a premium this year.
All right, thank you. Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin?
Yeah, just want to report about the, some of the CTE events kind of going along with the parks. Volleyball, basketball had very high participation this past season. Of course, the daddy-daughter dance, always a success. 3B is in full swing, got practices starting up. And some items at Car Park that are going to be happening this year, they're going to be putting in a pickleball court over there. They're going to be adding some more fencing along Lewis Avenue, replacing and repairing some picnic tables, and working on the pavilion that they have there. And also the new drinking fountains that they're going to be putting in this year. So Car Park, a big focus this summer.
All right, thank you, Griffin. Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan is excused. Dr. Schultz, anything from that group?
Just in talking to Ms. Dreehorst today, we are going, I'm going to join her at the behind-the-scenes in Lansing, come up here in May. As you can imagine, with the budget season upon us in Lansing, superintendent groups, administrative groups, and the board groups are working to remind our local representatives how important it is to fund education properly. So I'll be in Lansing several times over the next month doing so. But I'm excited to go there and get to know some other board members as well.
Okay, thank you. And the policy committee? You know, we haven't set our...
Worked on it yesterday, and it looks like every other policy I pulled out is changing or has changed. So we do have a call-out to Neola to ask them if they are going to send out a complete revamp of the spring that came out last month, as well as the fall from earlier this year. We don't have a large group of policies to review, but the ones that were federal Title IX related and some other issues and funding pieces that probably have changed by now. So we try to pare it down to see what's appropriate to do now, or wait until we find out what's next.
Okay, thank you. And then Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our items from the superintendent, and it looks like we have a couple of budget items here as well.
Yes. The first item actually isn't from me. It's Ms. Bruckner. It is mid-year budget amendment time. I did share this with each individual board member a few weeks ago, just to have you look over it. Per our board bylaws, we are to complete a mid-year budget amendment annually, usually April, February, March, April is the timeline for that. And this is the time, as Chrissy will tell you, that we now have our final audit numbers in from the fall. And we can compare that against where we started off with our budget, where we thought we were going to be, and where we are as of now. So Chrissy?
Thank you. I'll try to keep this quick because this is very dry information. So we'll start with the general fund. As Carl mentioned, when we started this budget, we had to make some assumptions. We didn't know what the foundation allowance would be, student enrollment, our audited fund balance, things like that. We now know those things. So we have updated our revenues and our audited fund balance to give us a total available to appropriate of $69,753,000. We made some minor adjustments to expenditures for contracts that Alex worked on settling. So we have total expenditures of just over $56 million for an estimated ending fund balance of $13,662,000, which is approximately 24% fund balance. Moving on to our community service fund, which is comprised of the recreation, latchkey, and health van programs. Combined, they have a total available to appropriate of just over $2.6 million. We did make an adjustment to the community ad program. They were able to purchase four new driver's ed cars in the fall. So community ad is now looking at an anticipated ending fund balance of just over $160,000. Latchkey is just over $1 million, and health van is about $154,000.
Chrissy, just to, I'm just going to chime in real quick. The latchkey fund balance is very large because they have a multi-year grant that was front-loaded. So these are funds that have to be spent down on grant items that are allowable. So this is, you know, purchasing new equipment, retaining staff, paying wages. It's not that they have a million dollars in their piggy bank and are still charging parents to say, oh, ma, I assure you. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
It is true. The food service fund, they continued the free school meals program this fiscal year, which means an increased number of meals served. So we had an increase in state revenue. With their beginning fund balance, gives them a total available to appropriate of The state mandates that the food service fund can only carry a value of three months' worth of expenses, and we far exceed that balance. So we have increased expenditures beyond normal operation expenses to try and bring that balance down to an acceptable level. So we have an estimated ending fund balance of $890,738. The technology millage, we didn't really see any changes from our beginning budget as far as revenues are concerned. Their audited fund balance comes in at $646,000 for a total available to appropriate of $2,432,000, less their anticipated expenses for an estimated ending fund balance of $491,000. The school activity fund, these are funds that are held for clubs, athletic teams, scholarships, elementary fundraisers. They have a total available to appropriate of $1,524,000. Their expenses should nearly mirror their anticipated revenue for the year and give them an estimated ending fund balance of $664,000. The debt retirement fund, this is primarily funds collected through taxes to repay the bond. They have a total available to appropriate of $3,865,000, less our semi-annual principal and interest payments for an estimated ending fund balance of $1,282,000. The capital maintenance fund, this is solely funded by transfers from the general fund. The strategic plan states that a minimum 1.5% be transferred annually. This budget reflects a 2% transfer to the, or from the general fund. So that would be an incoming revenue of $1,096,000, added to their beginning fund balance for a total available of $3,715,000. We do have some expenses that have already come out of this fund for wrestling mats. We purchased a few buses. So they have an estimated ending fund balance of $3,358,000 for future projects. The bond, I'm really hoping we close out the bond this year and finally spend these funds. They have a total available of just over $94,000, which I'm hoping we completely spend and close it out to an ending fund balance of zero. One last thing to audit. And finally, we have the Thomas George Trust. This is a trust that was left to the district around 2018 by a resident of the township. The principal of this trust cannot be spent, but we do receive annual interest disbursements. We expect that to be about $215,000 this year for a total available of $617,000. The funds can only be spent on high school math and science, so we expect expenditures to be about $169,000 for an estimated end fund balance of $447,000. Any questions?
I will just state that I think in an attempt to get the bond fund spent down, we have been, Tom has been working with a roofing consultant. We do need to address some roofing concerns at the high school. When the bond was completed and they did the pre-work, it was, anything that was not under warranty at that time were likely to go out of warranty in the next year. Well, that was back in 2015, probably, when the initial bond. Since then, because the high school is, it's set up where there's different sections of roof, it's not one roof. We've luckily had the roof at the auditorium replaced because of hail damage last year, free of charge through our insurance company. We've had to do some minor repairs, but our roofing consultant has given us a schedule. We are looking at over probably the next six years at around $6 to $7 million in roofing expenses between the high school, finishing the sections that were not either replaced already or were not under warranty. And also, our shiny new building is now 25 years old, and it is past its warranty as well. So we have some minor leaks at Monroe Road. That is a shingled roof. So we have a timeline, we have a schedule. We'll be coming to you guys at some point in the next month or two to kind of talk about year one. I think it was our request for about $600,000 to do a section of the roof at the high school. Tom, I think the first one was the media center, does that sound correct?
First portion is the old gym.
The old gym. There you go. So we'll, so the funds in the maintenance fund, the maintenance capital projects fund, as well as the $90,000 left in bond, I think will be put to good use in an expedient fashion. But yeah, thank you, Chrissy. Thank you, Chrissy. It is much better than we expected. We did do some right sizing of the district through attrition as well with our student reduction, but the state did come through with some categorical funds later in the year that we did not expect when we first did our budget. We really do, our first budget of the year is really a shot in the dark. We will not have a state budget, so I won't know how much money we're going to get per student until next year, is probably going to be in September, October, after talking to legislators today. So we'll have a rough estimate, and we'll do a budget the best we can based on student count presumptions. But the first budget's usually a shot in the dark, so I'm glad to see it's almost 6.5% higher than fund balance at that. And that's with giving raises, good raises, to every one of our groups.
All right. Can I get a motion for the consideration to accept the mid-year budget amendments?
Madam President?
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education accept the mid-year budget amendments, all funds for 2024, 2025, as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, I'll open up the floor. Any questions?
No questions, just thank you for your diligence, and I really appreciate the approach that we take with budgeting, that we are prepared for the worst and, you know, usually are pleasantly surprised. So that's the way to do it.
Okay. I'm not even going to address my usual state funding concerns I always have about how we don't get a budget until October. That just is beyond, I mean, 12 years running, I'll say the same thing, but I'll spare you my soapbox. I'm excited that we're at 13.6 and 24% fund balance. I mean, that is, and look around, the improvements in what the district looks like, the contracts, the increases in pay, the holiday bonus. I mean, there's just a lot of good reasons to be very proud as a district, board administration, staff for that 13.9 and the 24%. In addition, having that 3.3 million in the capital, and we've been using that to fund different things. So that is super exciting. I did have a question about latchkey. And can, is there a way that we can see taking out their grant funds? I'm just curious, because remember, we had a lot of questions a couple of years ago, right? They were not able to sell fund. And so I'm just curious to know if you removed that front-end spending?
Yeah, I'll put something together.
Okay. I'm assuming they're breaking even. I don't want to make that assumption, but I know they had put a lot of program changes in place and prepay and a whole bunch of things.
The year before, the year prior, well, several years prior to the awarding of that grant, that large grant, it was, they had turned it around quite well.
Yeah.
And that was through some processes we put in place with pay before and things of that nature, and made it easier. But I think if Chrissy backs out what we purchased because of the extra purchases because of that, we can, we can get you an idea of what, where they'd be.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious, I'd just like to give credit. I know we, they did turn it around, but I know that was one that we've continued to just pay attention to. All right, thanks, Chrissy. Appreciate the effort.
And Nancy, we should talk a little about community hall, community ad hall.
Sure.
I mean, to turn it around, two years ago, we had to reverse out, I think, $25,000, I believe it was, to make them whole that year. And COVID had a lot to do with it. But I, you know, working with Nancy, we have taken a really close look at what she's offering annually and making some changes to that, and enrollments up. They're getting, their programs are getting busier like they were when I first arrived. And so to have an expected $100,000 fund balance is quite a turnaround in just three years.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. I don't see any other comments or questions. This is a roll call vote. Amy Bisso is excused. Amy Dreehorst?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan is excused. Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Move on to, looks like some cafeteria flooring.
Yes, Tom is going to go through. We had, we had to put some RFPs out. I will, I am glad to say that the four projects that we are requesting approval for this evening will be paid for not out of general fund. So the numbers that Chrissy has just shared with you will not be affected by this. These are, these are funds from the food service excess account, as well as from the $500,000 categorical that we received this year for the transportation department, which we can use to hopefully pave the parking lot over there to make it a safer environment. The small amount, I guess I shouldn't say any, this very small amount that we're asking from general fund is, I think, about $13,000. And that is to paint the gym at MRE to match what the new cafeteria paint would be over there. And MRE was built with some unique colors, I'll say, and we're looking to the oranges and the yellows and golds that were there. We're looking to do a little Bedford branding as we go. It is expensive to do it all at one time, but this would be a great start to get that done this summer for very few dollars out of the general fund. Tom?
Yes, thank you. The first item we have is Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement Proposal. I recommend that we contract with KC, KCS Contracting for the amount of $68,925.
Would you like them to do all of them at once?
If you want to do all of them, then we'll vote separately. Thank you.
The second item is Transportation Pavement Replacement. I recommend that we contract with Henry W. Bergman for the amount of $507,848.48. The third item is Douglas Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement. I recommend that we contract with KCS Contracting LLC for $37,960. And the final one that I have is Consideration to Approve the Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria and Gymnasium Painting Proposal. I recommend that we contract with Lakeside Interior Contractors for $31,900.
The process for this was a little different than, we initially put the four projects out for bid and actually opened the bid, and then we were told by the state after asking sometime prior to that, that because some of this money is coming from the state of Michigan, we have to have prevailing wage included in it. And some of the funds for the cafeteria is coming from, I believe, USDA, and it is federal fund, so we also have to have prevailing wage with the Davis Bacon language written into it. So we had to actually repost and ask for rebids again. We did not like doing that, we, you know, but we were required to by law. So that is unfortunate, but we still, we still were able to get very competitive bids, and quite a few of them. Tom worked hard with the contractors that were interested to do several site visits, and I think we're pleased with where the numbers came in. And if you look at, I'm sorry, I don't have it up for the audience, but if you look at the transportation yard facility, we did, with some altern, we did, the yellow would be in, yellow and red were the main bid, and then we had a couple of alternates to do the rest of the parking lot for staff behind the yellow, and also the driveway, which would be on the south. So both driveways would be completely redone. I think the numbers came in where we are recommending that we can do that with those transportation funds. So that would be a great, we talked about this for about a year or so here now. So this would be, this would be a great way to get that started, and maybe down the road we can work on the rest of the parking lot of Indian Creek, you know, over toward the, over toward the creek. But we could put these on the website, they're already on the website under the bids, but we could put this, as well as the budget, on the website tomorrow morning for anyone who would be interested in looking at it.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement?
Madam President?
Todd?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement Proposal as recommended.
Thanks, Todd. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Cole? Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Amy is excused. Amy Dreehorst?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan is excused. Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a move, can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the transportation pavement replacement?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the transportation pavement replacement proposal as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Cole. Any discussion on this one? Carl, just to be clear, we're doing the blue, the red, and the yellow. Carl, just to be clear, we're doing the blue, the red, and the yellow as part of this?
Yes, the yellow was the base bid along with the red. The red is red because it's actually heavier density, concrete instead of...
It's concrete where the buses turn.
Okay.
So that, but the blue was the alternates, A and B. So we are doing everything in the color.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Seeing no other comments. Amy is excused. Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan, excuse. Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. And then lastly, the consideration to approve Douglas Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement.
Madam President.
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Douglas Road Elementary Cafeteria Flooring Replacement Proposal as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Todd. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none. Amy Bissel is excused. Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan, excuse. Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
One more. We got one more out?
Oh, guess, sorry, it was on the other piece. Did we talk through this one?
We did.
Oh, we did. Sorry.
The flooring, it's essentially the same project, but it, oh, this is the painting. So the flooring was two separate ones.
Got it. Okay. All right. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria and Gymnasium Painting?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve Monroe Road Elementary Cafeteria and Gymnasium Painting Proposal as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Griffin. Any discussion outside of what I already...
I just had one question on my end, because looking at the, looking on this end for like the bidding, is there a performance bond that comes with lakeside contracting? Like, do we get performance bond with them?
The requirement for the, the requirement for the bid packages are that each company is to submit a performance bond when they submit their performance. A couple of companies did not do that, and they were excluded from the final decision.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Amy Bissel is excused. Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Megan, excuse. Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our personnel items. Alex?
Madam President, I have a few items for the board to consider this evening. The first is consideration to approve BEA to BAA change of assignment for math instructor at Bedford Senior High School to district athletic director for Mr. Larry Nocella, who was in attendance this evening. Would you like me to go through all of them or individually?
Go ahead.
All through, thank you.
Thank you.
The second is to consideration to approve BEA retirement of second grade instructor at Monroe Road Elementary, Mrs. Cheryl Lekowski. And we have, number three has two parts, consideration to accept BAA retirements for principal at Bedford Junior High School, Mr. Roger Hurley, and principal at Jackman Road, Mrs. Sherry Farnin.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and take the first one. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the BEA to BAA assignment?
Madam President?
Cole?
I move that the Board of Education approve the BEA to BAA assignment change for Larry Nocella, math instructor at the senior high to district athletic director as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Todd. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Larry, can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the BEA retirement?
Madam President?
Todd?
I move that the Board of Education approve the BEA retirement of Cheryl Lekowski, second grade instructor at Monroe Road Elementary as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. And lastly, can I get a motion for the consideration to accept the BAA retirements?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education accepts BAA retirements A and B as recommended. A, principal at the junior high school, Roger Hurley, and B, principal at Jackman Road Elementary, Sherry Farnin.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks, Cole. Any discussion? Seeing none? Yeah, go ahead. I ask this all the time. If we don't support it, does that mean anything? No, it doesn't. Okay. All right then. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just say that, starting with Larry, since he decided to show up tonight, in his AD gear now. Larry is a well-respected teacher. He's not been, he's a long-time resident. We stole him from Monroe several years back in the math department, but the interview process was thorough. It includes a student, administrators, coaches, teachers, staff members, admin, several rounds. We had many good candidates. I was actually very excited about the number of candidates. I think 20 candidates, I think, came in. That's quite a bit for an AD position, because that is a very difficult position. If anyone is wondering what an athletic director does, they work all day planning, and they work all night monitoring and ensuring nothing, an ordinary goes on. So, right. So with weather in the spring, he's getting a quick jumpstart in here, working with Mark. And I, you know, he worked with him for about a year or so. We have no doubt that Larry will do a great job and carry on the tradition of Bedford Athletics and working with our students and our great parents. So congratulations, Larry. We're looking forward to having you on our team. We'll miss you in the classroom. I know our kids will miss you, but it's a great fit.
I'll note, he also accepted, I don't know if the words accepted, but voluntold into the Alumni Association liaison from the athletic department, so...
Congratulations.
And he showed up at the meeting, yes, on Monday. So it was great. Thanks, Larry.
And then the principal hires, while it's tough to lose an administrative team member, Sherry and Roger have been around for a long time and have done a great job leading. We will miss them greatly. We have started the process to fill their difficult roles with putting out surveys like we have, we did for athletic director, we did for Kevin Weber's position. And we put out surveys for students in the upper grades at elementary and then the junior high, as well as parents and staff stakeholders, just to get an idea of what they're looking for in their next leader. And then we'll follow this, a similar process with a well-rounded committee and round of interviews. I've already seen applications start to roll in. So once again, Bedford will draw the best possible pool.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our public commentary. Seeing none. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our announcements and comments and our administrator and the audience. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. And we tried to get Sherry to tear up that. It's hard, because kids tried, we all tried. She ignored us. She said she's earned it, and, you know, what do you say?
Yes.
I guess she has, right?
She has.
Yeah, she will be highly missed, though. So it's going to be a really hard piece. First of all, all five buildings are getting ready for state testing. That step's coming up for everybody, so all the buildings are getting ready for that. We have that coming. At the high school, they're working on their master schedule. They have 36 students being inducted into the NHS this week. That's awesome. On Sunday, the split is hosting a free egg hunt in the Bedford Community Stadium, and they're partnering with Crary Drugs and Monroe County Sheriff's Department to host a prescription drug takeback during the egg hunt. Proms are on the corner, so are many senior celebrations, so they're getting excited and ready for that. They're also participating in the county health program and the Michigan State Police Initiative, and providing a mailing to families related to senior activities and their risks with drinking. Douglas Road, as Jackman and Monroe Road, we've all finished collecting parent input for the next school year, getting ready to put together our class placements for next year. Douglas Road is also getting ready for some field trips. They have camp coming up in April, as does MRE. Jackman's already been there. All three buildings are getting ready for kindergarten registration and conferences and open house that's coming up for us. Jackman also has our blood drive coming up on the 23rd and our annual fun night. So busy spring coming up. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our public relations. Is Jason?
I don't want to do them anymore.
Is not? No, you haven't.
So first of all, thanks to everybody that was at the trade fair and helped out at the trade fair. I think that went pretty well for us. Saw a lot of people, and it was, seemed to be a pretty good crowd. Everybody at their table has a notebook, and that was our new PR material that we're using for recruitment. They just took that to a job fair, I believe, at UT. Both Kim Elschlager and Kevin Weber were at that. So that's something that I thought would be a little bit more meaningful. Kim alluded a little bit about K-Day. You'll see that all the board members received a sign. It's been my goal this year for K-Day to be the biggest that we can be. So also, you have a postcard, that all those postcards were delivered to both Temperance and Lambertville post offices. That'll be sent out, and that should be in people's mailboxes tomorrow. Everybody in the community gets that, so that that will, it's really about the K-Day, but it also has points of pride on the back. So I'm pretty happy about that. Also, deliver the same signs you have to all of the schools. All the elementary schools have those, so that community members can take those and put them in their neighborhoods, and then I can get those back if I need to update them, or we just get some new ones for next year. And the mini mule, the inflatable mini mule should be here by the end of the week. And thanks also to our elementaries that all chipped in to do that, because that was a pretty big project. So then, I noticed that in Student Services, they have the K-Day bags all packed and ready to go. There's signage there as well, so that your new kindergarten student will have a sign, just like the seniors, when you begin and end your time here as a kicking mule, you will be recognized appropriately. And then lastly, for recognitions, we're averaging 1.4 million views a month still on Facebook. That's a little soft because of spring break, but next week is National Assistant Principals Week, so we're featuring all of those people, and individual signage on Facebook. Then we also have National Student Leadership Week, which I'm going to all the elementary schools and getting pictures of all the groups of student leadership groups that are awful excited that they're going to be featured on social as well as on all of our marquees. So, and then lastly, Lauren Beals, through the athletic department, is a former student, and she is running in her Boston Marathon, and she is running with a jersey of Scott Earl and memory of Scott Earl. So we're doing some work with that behind the scenes that will have some coverage. And then I was over at Glass City CrossFit today, featuring a student that will be featured Monday on WTOL. So a lot of good things going on, enjoying every bit of it. And if anybody has any suggestions, you can always drop by or drop me a message.
Did you say you were doing CrossFit today? Is that what you said?
I was looking at why I would not be doing CrossFit. So, yes. The gentleman, I was telling, I was telling Alex that he's a freshman. He's ranked number one in the United States for his division, and is really close this weekend. He'll know if he's qualified for the world competition that'll be held in Columbus. So it's pretty amazing stuff, and you'll be able to see that on my socia's, because I was there getting my pictures as well. But also, you'll see that for, on Monday at 6 o'clock, WTOL. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to our executive cabinet, and we'll start with Chrissy.
I'd like to say congratulations to the CTE students in accounting. That strikes home. That was hard work. We have submitted our food service bids to the state. They have to approve them before we can release them. So we will be waiting to hear back from them on any adjustments that they suggest to those bid documents. And now we will be moving on to planning on how to spend food services access fund balance.
Thank you. Good problem to have. Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you. Congrats to Larry. I think he's going to be a fantastic fit. As Dr. Schultz said, you know, he's been around for a few years, and I think he's going to do a great job. And our retirements, from Mrs. Lekowski to Mr. Hurley to Mrs. Farnin, those are three icons here in our district that are big losses. We did put out a survey. As Dr. Schultz said, we've had over 200 responses to those surveys from our stakeholders. So we'll use those surveys to help guide the process. But this is a great place to work, especially to be an administrator. I can say that from personal experience, and so I think we will be an attractive employer for that. On the HR side, we're staying pretty busy with end-of-the-year wrap-up. From retirements, I'm hearing some rumors, you know, we might get a couple more here or there between the end of the school year, assigning all of our staff for next year for their placements, and just the hiring process in general keeps us pretty busy. Above and Beyond, for quarter three deliveries will occur next week, so that's something fun that Dr. French and Mr. Sanderson and I will get an opportunity to do, get out there, spread some cheer. So that's all that's going on in my world. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Dr. French?
Thank you. Getting back in the swing this week from spring break, everybody is, and just wanted to highlight, CTE had mock interviews, as they have the last few years. This week, I got to participate on Tuesday, and just, I always have a great time getting to meet the young people, and I'm so impressed, especially the seniors. Juniors, it's their first try at it, and they're working on some things. But the seniors were quite impressive and just really wonderful young people to get to meet and know for a minute. So a great pleasure to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Tom?
Yes, we were busy last week while everybody was on vacation for spring break. It's a good time to get into schools when there's no students. We started reciting the Bedford baseball press box. We'll get that all painted up, because we are hosting baseball districts, softball districts, and track and field districts. So we want to make sure that our area is looking good for those events. It's shaping up to be another busy summer with the four RFPs that we're going to be doing this summer. In addition to that, we have signage at all the schools, interior and exterior, that's going to be happening. We've got all the school signal signs at each school out on the roads. We still have to install all those. We have the filter-first requirements that we have to meet. I think I stated we had 494 fixtures in the district that has water that comes out of them, so we have to either make it non-consumable or consumable and filter it. I've got that down to 94 fixtures that are going to be consumable. The rest of the fixtures, we'll get stickers that says non-consumable, hand washing only. And lastly but not least, is congrats to Larry Nocella. I look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Tom.
That's all I have.
Dr. Schultz?
Same thing. Just busy spring. We are working, Jason and I are going to start working on our kind of superintendent updates more that will go out to all families with a highlight of all of the exciting events by building, so that families can stay on top of that. I know that we already, they already get school G updates and other emails, but try to put it in one place in case you have multiple students. And then the events that are going to be taking place, graduate commencement will be coming up here. I think it's June 1st this year, the first Sunday of June. That'll be, that'll be another wonderful day. And welcome back from spring break. It's a sprint for the next eight, I think, eight weeks.
Is that all that's left? Eight weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to our Board of Education. Cole?
Just congratulations to the CTE auto students and the accounting students. They're super, super cool to watch them and get all that. Congratulations to Mr. Nocella on the AD position. That's super awesome. I can't wait to see what you do. And then also, congratulations to Mrs. Farnin and Mr. Hurley on their retirements. Everybody have a great rest of your week.
Thanks, Cole. Amy?
Well, yes, congratulations, Larry, on your new position. And I said to the one young man who is from the auto program, you know, that's quite an accomplishment for somebody who, as you said, he came from driver's ed, and so he doesn't have a driver's license yet. But, so that, I'm pretty impressed by that. And of course, the accounting students too. Thank you, Chrissy, again, for the financial update. And to Jason, I'd just like to say he's going to have my neighbors talking, because I have two kids graduated from college and one from high school this year, and I'm about to put a K-Day sign in my front yard. So the neighbors are going to wonder what's happening at the Drehorst house. But anyway, I'm happy to support K-Day.
Thank you. Todd?
I just want to say congratulations to Larry and your promotion. The retirees, it's always good to see, it's always good to see the end factors as opposed to the beginning factor. And 10 AC certified, did I get that right? 10 of them got AC certified. That's a huge accomplishment. And it's easy for me...
That's a, that's a huge accomplishment. And it's easy for me to, to look at the trade end of the, of the CTE and not the accounting or the, or the automotive. So, congratulations to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Griffin?
I'd like to say thank you to Chrissy for the budget presentation. I think $69 million budget is the biggest that I can remember seeing. We're in a great shape financially. A lot of districts out there are not. You hear all the time in the news about layoffs and horrible things happening in, in schools, and we do a really good job with the budget here. The project quotes, I can tell you with absolute certainty that the bus garage paving is going to be well-received. And I also wanted to talk about the mock interviews because I went there first time. I'd never done it before, and the kids did very well. I talked about 30 of them because I went both days. And one thing I did notice, and I brought this up to Jackie when I was over there, about three or four out of the five, out of five students that I talked to either have taken welding or are taking welding. And welding is like the smallest physical area that we have over there. They can only have so many people back there doing it. So many people want to do it. They can only have so many people there doing it at one time because of the safety factor, and they don't have the electrical capacity to run all that equipment at once. Even, I mean, they have all those brand-new shiny equipment in the shop that we've gotten over the last few years, plus the welders. They can't use it all because we're maxed out on power and electricity over there. I think it might be time in the next couple of years as a board to decide how we do something about the lack of physical space for the CTE programs. And not just the physical space, like even the sewing machines, they can't run all the sewing machines at once because we don't have the electrical capacity. The infrastructure